We have a super secret group in the front.
That's right. All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to go ahead and welcome you to the Fruita City Council meeting. The time is now seven PM and we're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counsel Bremen.
Here.
Counsel Perser. Counsel Williams. Counsel Cry.
Here.
Counsel Miller is excused absent. Counsel Hansi.
All right, we're going to move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand with me. We'd like to take the opportunity to allow a moment of silence for all faith and belief, the opportunity for silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the blood of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments on the agenda? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll counsel?
Counsel Bremen.
Aye.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we're going to move into, uh, we've got three presentations tonight. And so our first one is recognition of Elmwood Estates HOA adopt a street volunteers. And Shannon Vossen, our city assistant city manager is going to, are you doing the intro on this or do?
I would be happy to. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, so yeah, I think about two years ago, our livability commission formally created an adopt a street, adopt a trail program based upon things they were interested in and um interest from the council to really have an opportunity for um citizen groups, families, local businesses to uh volunteer and give back uh to Fruita. So since they've created that program, um, we've had seven separate groups volunteer and it's been a great success. Um, at our, one of our meetings last month, we recognized Family Health West um for adopting uh Port Shabbat Lee Avenue. They've done a number of cleanups. And then another group that we're recognizing tonight is the Elmwood Heights HOA. So we do have two members of the Elmwood Heights HOA uh with us as well. They adopted North Mesa Street between uh Ollie Avenue and K and three quarters road. So we just want to take some time to recognize them and of course, uh, thank them for all of their uh service for the Fruita community. So turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, I'm going to come down front because I've got some certificates and I know we've got Linda Johnson and Jamie Vavra here. So I'm going to come down and get the microphone. All right, do you guys want to come up? Um, and I don't know if you guys want to take and deliver the rest of the certificates or if you want to make everybody come in to pick them up. All right, and you, what's your name? Jamie, all right. Well, we appreciate your dedication to Fruita community and your willingness to help keep Fruita clean. We've got our heart fruit button, a sticker, and then a day pass to the rec center.
Oh, great. Great. Thank you.
And Linda, we've got the same for you.
Great, thank you.
And then I'm going to read you the list of the other names. So that way you guys can come up so everybody can see. You don't want to have your back to the audience. I know. We've got Alan Walters participated. Sherry Walters. Dan Moore. Jane Lloyd. Margot Whiny. Pat Moore. And Tim Whiny. Let's give them a round of applause. Did you guys want to say anything?
Not very much trash, but we do clean up.
Well, that's good. And so you want to take those for him. All right. Well, thanks a lot. All right. And the next one is a presentation. We've got Brad McLeod here from Excel Energy. He's their area manager. Um, and so he's going to be giving us um an update on some of our concerns related to utility strikes with um all the fiber going in and that.
Thank you very much, Mayor, uh, council members. Apparently for Tim, Matthew might have been standing here before me. All the way up here. So I'm going to bring that down and see if we can catch it up. Um, if it's all right by you, I want to address the issues and then we'll handle almost like a workshop where you can answer questions. I've got some of my members of our team from both our damage prevention and our gas here in the back of the room. Apparently that's where they sat in high school. So they're sitting there. Our, I'm totally familiar with it and I relate to it. So I'm okay with that. Um, but we first, I'd like to address the fact that I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you and meet with you tonight. Um, we always want open lines of communication. And if there's thoughts, concerns, questions, or ideas, we always like the idea of you guys reaching out to us and we're more than happy to have these conversations. Uh, more than that, I think it's important to emphasize that for Excel Energy, our job is obviously to provide dependable energy, gas and electric to our customers. But our priority is always the safety of our customers, our communities, and to be quite honest, our employees. Um, and that is our first and foremost priority. Um, looking at the numbers and and realizing we've had what we count as uh five utility strikes since the beginning of the year to now. We wanted to look into it as well and we've been trying to address and I had, I had the opportunity about a month and a half ago to meet with staff and kind of talk to them and address some of the issues that we had going on. And then uh, since then, we've had two more strikes. Uh, some of those uh have been due to issues with locates. Some of those have been issues with the excavator contractors that we had at the time. Um, I can thankfully tell you that at least from my perception, the efforts that have been put forward uh will do much to mitigate those concerns going forward. Uh, I can easily tell you that obviously we looking year to date, the by the way, it's good work. I'm glad you guys are having folks come in and upgrade the fiber. Uh, but the fiber locates that we've had in the market currently are up almost thirty-five hundred percent this year to date last year. Um, so obviously there's that much more activity. The risk is much higher no matter what. That being said, we would still like to mitigate it to where the risk is nil. Um, and know that we can make, give assurances that people are safe and that our customers and communities are safe. Um, out of that, um, we have isolated a few things after the first of the year, and I don't know how much staff has been able to share with you. We actually have uh converted as of the beginning of February. Uh, we brought on a new locate company, uh, changed contract from what we had been working with simply because we were not pleased with uh both the performance and their timelines and the way they had met with what we needed. We also realized in some cases, we didn't believe they were doing a good job on complete locates. That does allow for some leeway in the middle where it's still taking that new company that we've brought in time to get caught up and be where they're at, but we have assurances that they will be better. Um, I also want to give credit uh to Mark Construction, who's a contractor who's been in charge of hiring most of the excavation companies. They have also uh looked at the issues that have been brought in. And I know that for example, two of the utility strikes that we had were simply because we did not have an excavator that potholed or potholed correctly. Um, and that's obviously so with their crossing our line and they're putting in theirs, we pothole in those areas. That's where they do that. So we can make sure that we should avoid utilities. Um, and since that had not been done, Mark Construction has been nothing but a good operator in our opinion. Uh, and they've gone ahead and relieved that contractor and have also brought in different staff to help them with that. Um, our, our team also, and and Brad Yinter in the back here is, is one of the individuals that was a part of it. Uh, back in mid-February, we did a training uh with several of the contractors local located in the area um and crews that are working throughout Mesa County doing these projects, roughly about approximately a hundred individuals um that we had in to do these. And we did both uh practices, uh best practices for digging safely and also horizontal and directional drilling, also known as boring. Um, and we have brought those processes into place. It is something that we do on occasion, as we see it necessary, we try to do those safety trainings. Um, obviously in this case, we wanted to make sure we could reach out and get those going in this first quarter with some of the issues that we've had. So it made it an appropriate time uh to bring along more training that way and try to resolve those issues. Um, we also have our staff that, you know, is looking at the number of line requests and uh tickets that we get for locates on a regular basis. And we're trying to make sure that we are keeping track of where they're at and what's going on um on a daily basis so that we can try to avoid any further issues. But uh without getting further in depth, I would like to make myself and my team available for any questions that you guys have. Um, but we feel very confident with the change in staff and contractors on both sides of the issue with the trainings that we've been doing and the other things that we're trying to make sure that we have in place for mitigation efforts that we should uh hopefully have a very uh smooth transition going forward uh with those that are brought into place now.
Oh, that's the first question. So I know it's yeah, yeah, get a drink of water.
Yeah, I brought it just in case. Mayor, I've, I've been here before, so it's okay.
Um, I know some of the locates were off. I know one they said was off by twenty-five feet. And I don't know if that's because, is it an older line? Is it, I mean, are there certain things that are affecting some of the?
Uh, sometimes, so locates can be off for multiple reasons. One is not trusting the equipment they're using. Uh, there could be bad mapping. In that specific case, uh, it's a really rare anomaly. If you look at it, there are multiple things that played into that one. There were mapping that said that the pipe was going over this way. We also knew it was coming right up to the station where it was at and it was located. It should have been easy to make sure that we did a circle locate. Somebody should have been thinking that there's another line on that other side, probably. Um, those things were not done. Um, but by the paperwork, you know, by the mapping that was in place, that line shouldn't have been there. It was not something that we anticipated. And it is a rare, rare occasion for that to happen. Historically, there was nothing that showed that line there. Uh, that's, that's what I know the circumstance. I've looked into that one quite a bit. Um, there was bleed off, so they had two lines that they did catch on the locates. They also had a line and it can happen. And this is why locators need to know their equipment and trust with their equipment. Uh, sometimes comms lines can also give a false reading. And they'll pick that up. And that was also in that range of where that one was at on that specific case. Yeah.
You guys know what potholing is?
No.
Engineers would hate you for that term.
I'm using my guys' term. Basically, we dig small holes where we know that the crosses are supposed to be so they can locate where the line is and where the line should go. And in that case, that's what we're trying to avoid. Uh, the, the most recent that had happened here about a week and a half ago on the eleventh uh was simply because it wasn't potholed um on either side. Um, nor was it at the neighborhood. They were on the other side of it. And so when they came through, they just nicked the line. It was closed. They should give us about a twelve inch separation. In this case, uh, we had a less than one percent and one centimeter and they actually nicked the line. And that's what caused the issue concern. That, for lack of a better term, potholing, um, is something that we have looked at. And if we can do that in more cases, uh, that's the other option that sometimes is considered because it certainly helps us prevent and take a better closer look um at what is possibly there. And so I know our guys and our crews have, have asked and looked at that as well.
Oh, I know you, or you talked a little bit about what you guys are trying to do with training and some of those other things to help in the future. Cause I think that's kind of what we're interested in because we've only got part of our city.
Right.
We still have a good chunk of it to go. So how do you feel moving forward? Uh, it's going to look, I mean, I know you said you had five, you know, strikes already this year, so.
So, so I will, I may use percentages and, and please don't think I'm trying to discount the five strikes that we've had because in our case, we believe one strike is one too many. And I, I can't emphasize that enough. We really want to be at the point where we're not having to deal with those. I mean, it's for everybody's sake, it's, it's more than inconvenience. It's, it's, you know, there's a danger to it. And we want to prevent that in every opportunity. When you look at the amount of activity that we've had uh in percentage to the number of strikes we've had out of, it's, it's roughly at a two point six out of every thousand that we've had. Um, year to date last year was two point four. So this time last year, um, there would have been two utility strikes in the course of the first quarter. This year we've had five. Um, and that in again goes back to the fact that we've had a almost thirty-five hundred percent increase in the amount of activity that's going on with utilities. Um, however, that being the statistics they are, I do believe that with the trainings we've been doing, the change in companies that we are using for our locates and the, I think proactive measures that Mark Construction has taken with their excavators. I think that we have put ourselves in a good place where I don't anticipate this being a continued issue going forward. I also am never going to over promise and under deliver to you, Mayor. There may be a strike once in a while. It does happen. But I don't want to, so I don't want to sit up here and say it's never going to happen again. But I think we are doing all the preventable measures that as a utility and with our partners. Um, and I know that we've got some people coming up after me. They're going to, you know, be looking at the same things and, and I think that we're using the preventable preventable measures in place to avoid these in best case, say, situations.
What um, what have the strikes been between, or have they all been gas strike?
All, all the strikes um that I'm aware of that we're addressing tonight. Um, I know that there's probably been some uh, there's, I think at least one that was a, and I don't get the same numbers on it, so I can't factually tell you um, if, if excavators and locates were wrong for other utilities. So I think there was a water strike at one point on one of these. I think there was um, I don't know that there was any electric, which is great. Um, but so I, the ones that I know of that we're dealing with and addressing are, are gas.
What's your response time for that it's taken on average to come to those when the issue happened, the strike happens that end resolving it?
So within being brought, it being made aware of, of the strike, our crews, I mean, and I can, I can ask Lee to come up here. He's going to hate me for it. Um, but our response time is immediate. I mean, the moment we know about a strike, we're getting folks out, we're getting gas shut down. We're working with uh local emergency responders, whether it be fire. Uh, if there's any need for any other services, we make sure we get, you know, the areas blocked off, we get people evacuated from homes. And then after the fact, um, obviously we go in, we try to mitigate and repair as quickly as possible. And then after the fact, there are cases after we put the, you know, back on, we've got to go house by house to make sure that we're helping with relights or what have you, to make sure that the gas is on and it's safe in each of those uh residences or businesses if they were evacuated in the process as well. So yeah, absolutely. Time is always of the essence. We know it's an inconvenience for folks. Uh, but we also want to make sure that we get things repaired properly. But our response time is as fast as we can because it's a recognized concern. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Any else have any questions?
My question was going to be about response and stuff like that. You guys, I'm assuming because this happens occasionally, you have those in place.
We do. Yeah. Once again, I forget really specific on it. I'm going to tell Lee he has to come up, but all right. Appreciate it.
I want to be a little careful, Mr. Mayor, because of what I do for a living and I want to make sure it's not a doesn't look like I'm trying to drum up business. So, uh, but with what I do, I have a certain amount of knowledge that does make me dangerous. Cause I know just enough. Um, what are the guidelines of when you hydro vac and when you don't hydro vac?
I'll actually have to ask Mr. Yenter, can you come up here and help answer this for me? Brad Yenter, he's our uh in charge of our damage prevention and uh Brad can answer that better than I can.
Yeah, so it's been a best practice as far as the Common Ground Alliance is concerned, which is a national level organization for excavation practices. Um, that potholing utilities while crossing them for directional boring should be, they should be exposed and then the borehead should be what observed as it crosses and as they pull a utility back.
Okay.
As of the um legislative change in twenty twenty-one for the state of Colorado, uh, that is a requirement if the facility owner requests it. So that's something we've been pushing on Mark Construction and their subcontractors on very hard to make certain that they do that. And when they don't do that, especially after the strike a week and a half ago, oh, we're in agreement with Mark Construction. If your contractors, if we catch them not doing that, we're going to ask you to get rid of them and they have done so. So that is a state requirement if the facility owner requests it in Colorado since the change of twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
And we are enforcing that.
All right.
Cause that's one of the main ways you prevent bore damages is to see the facility and then observe the boring process.
So when you're doing locates, um, I mean, you can get ASE with thirty-eight, twenty-two standards with level A if you're hydrovacating. But if you're not hydrovacating, you're just using are you using EM or EM locate tools with a with a GPS? Yeah.
Uh, we don't use, our contractors do not use a GPS uh system to locate the lines or to document where they are at at this point.
Okay, so there's not a requirement for level B or level C? Okay.
There's, it needs to be electronically locatable. Uh, and then you have the state requirement, the, the tolerance zone of eighteen inches on your side of the marks. Uh, which includes the diameter of the facility. Which is in addition to the diameter of the facility. Uh, that's a Colorado standard. Then once, if it's not electronically locatable, then we have processes in place to find that.
Okay.
But that's, that's the requirement that we have.
All right, um. So you're not required for the ASE. Okay. Um, are you familiar at all with what happened up in Boulder with Excel? Okay, well then I won't ask. Okay, that's not fair. Okay, that's all for me right now. Thank you.
What makes you feel more confident about this new um company that you're using for locate?
Again, I could bring Brad back up who amazingly is barely intelligent and has a really good name. Brad.
Yeah.
The uh previous locate contractor that we had was not meeting our performance requirements. We track their asphalt damages on as they go along and we track their on-time ticket performance of their locates being done on time daily. And that's something that we know from years of experience in the damage prevention is that if your locates are done on time, a lot of the other problems that arise can be dealt, have time to be dealt with. Um, the previous contractor was not keeping up with their on-time performance and that led to a lot of issues. So we feel confident that this new company, they are now as of a couple of weeks ago, completely one hundred percent caught up and working ahead. So that gives us time to deal with anything that comes up as a complication for finding those facilities. So that's, that's the reason the old company went away and the new company is, is meeting our standards for that.
Thank you very much.
Did the old company have the initials SC?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Brad or Brad?
The only thing that, that I'm curious about and if, if this, well, hopefully it doesn't happen again, but it's happened a couple of times. Is there any systems in place that like say if this happens in the middle of the afternoon and a, a restaurant has to close and they miss the entire day's revenue? Like I know for um perfect example of this one, one of them happened right before Valentine's Day and that's for wave is one of their biggest days of the year and they had to shut down. And they have specific drinks that people wait all year long for that one day. So they got hit pretty hard on that day. And I don't know if that's something that you guys have, but just like to bring that up and see if that is something that. Sure.
Or so.
The claims department now.
He's all of them.
He has more purview with other areas of the organization than I do. I'm pretty.
Sure. Is there any situation for that, Brad? Okay.
I do have another question. Don't, I just stopped there. Um, after you do a locate, do you go back and do any updates to previous as built?
Yes.
Okay.
We have an ongoing program. If we find efficiencies in our mapping, we do, we update them, get them uh so that they are current on the uh prints that the locators rely on. And that is happening within a matter of a couple of days.
Okay.
That a request for a correction is turned in until it's active is only a couple of days. And that's a vast improvement.
But there's still no geospatial location associated with those. Okay. Any other questions for Brad before let him sit down? Uh, or Brad? All right. Well, thank you for coming in and
Thanks, thank you.
And we appreciate all your like working with staff and that too, because I think that really helps, you know, keep that flow of information for us at least.
Well, insincerely, your staff is always fantastic to work with. You've got a great team all the way around. And I'm not just saying that because I'm terrified of Kimberly, but I mean, you guys really are great.
For record, as you should be.
Yeah. I've known her for a long time. Uh, no, you have a great team to work with and it's always our pleasure. We want to be good neighbors and good partners. And I mean, there's a good part of my staff that lives in Fruita. So I mean, they are very serious about what we do. So thank you guys very much for what you do.
Thank you so much.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our next presentation. Um, so we've got Doug Seacat here from uh Deeply Digital. And so it looks like also Jonathan Cook is the project manager. Uh, so they're going to come and talk with us about some of our concerns with the utility strikes related to uh our fiber going in. So welcome.
Thank you very much for inviting us. It's actually, you know, good to get, come see you guys and talk to you about this and anything else you want to talk about. So appreciate it. Well, I guess to get started, uh, we're here, you know, part of it is to talk about the strikes and also like, you know, maybe I'll start with the good stuff. We're excited that uh you've allowed us to come and, and build into the community. We've had a tremendous amount of um great response. We had a meeting over at the library last week and over a hundred people showed up and was super excited about what, what we're doing in the community. So um, you know, building a fiber network in a town is not easy and it's a, it's a big challenge. And especially, you know, that this town just trying to get it done in a time that everybody's excited to have internet and that, you know, so you're, you're always excited to get them hooked up, but it just is not building network. So anyway, we appreciate um the patience and all the efforts that you guys have done as a community for us. I think we gave you an overview. There's a PDF that everybody got, I think, and
No, I don't have the PDF.
It's not in our packet.
No.
So Brad was talking about uh the utility hits, you know, specific to gas. Um, we have had some additional utility hits. So there's, uh, you know, maybe a few other things that we can talk about. Um, I wanted to start, we were talking about potholing, um, and you know, what is hydrovacation? So I just wanted to point that out a little bit more, you know, add to that. That is um, very important to us as well. It is a standard that we have uh made as a uh contractor that every utility is potholed. And what potholing is really to add to what they were talking about is it's a vacuum with either dry or wet, you know, water. So ours all, you'll introduce water to the area, use a vacuum, suck it up. So you're not going to damage the utility. So it's you'll always um hydrovac until you find the utility. We never will bore or, or move forward until we can see visually that. And that is our standard to be able to see the bore head going above or below the, the utility. Um, majority of the time what we're doing in this community is boring. You know, there's obviously other types of excavation with, you know, mini X or trenching or that sort of thing too, which would also have the same requirements of us doing a, a board with that. We're based out of Montrose. We, we have two companies. And so we're doing this for Clear Networks. Clear Networks is the internet company um that is providing the internet service. Once the network is built, deeply digital is the contractor. Um, I'm the owner of both. So we're both, you know, the same company, same people, but we started building and had two different companies when we did this. So that's why there's two different companies. Um, so deeply digital is the one and, and the, the company that is um managing the projects. Um, we have some of our own excavation crews, but most of the work being done for uh conduit installation is being done by Mark Construction and other subcontractors. And it is very important that we all have a good relationship. Like, you know, Excel Energy was saying, they have, they know who Mark is. Um, they, they work with them on a day-to-day basis. So do we, we're all trying to communicate and, and do things the correct way. You know, it's very important for Clear Networks that the town is excited for us to be here. So, you know, our goal is not to make everybody upset or scared that we're a utility line because we want them to sign up for our service, obviously after we're done. So um, you know, that's an important piece that we're always trying to look on and partly why we have our own construction company because you know, we're able to control the, the quality and that type of work that's being done. But obviously as you start hiring more and more subcontractors, that it changes a little bit. They do have standards that we have, um, you know, that we presented our, our construction contracts have standards, these standards like potholing and, and the things that we require for a utility to be located are in our contracts and have that um with training, we, we discuss it before the project starts. So it's very clear how we want, you know, utilities handled before construction. with training, we, we discuss it before the project starts. So it's very clear how we want, you know, utilities handled before construction project starts. I don't know how much you want us to go into detail, I guess, with construction side. Maybe I could open up to questions. Jonathan Cook is also our project director. So he has a lot of detail.
What, I guess, what, how, I know you guys are striking more than just, I mean, Excel with some of the boring. So you have kind of any numbers as far as what you've seen with the process that's started. Ninety percent gone with the north side, but we still have the south side. But I missed the number. See, I didn't look at that.
So I mean, if you look at that page, we have since the beginning of the project, as of September, inception, we've had nineteen utility hits. Six of them we've classified and you're both working with Exon Energy and the other utility companies. Six of them have been contractor fault. I mean, it's basically not following our standards and our, our processes of what we're trying to do things, whether it's stated, they're not potholing or not, or they're going into places to not follow any procedure where we have, where, you know, when you physically see the borehead actually passing the utility, both in its entry point plus its pullback. Or if they're, you know, for a second reason, what we had, you know, a week and a half ago where they pothole the utility and they had to make a lot of a chase or path instead of, again, potholing to actually physically verify that location and seeing that, seeing our bore, our borehead passing that utility line. They did not do so, and which is what caused, actually, it wasn't necessarily passing or crossing. It was paralleling the guidelines. They're violated two different, we haven't placed there, but artists, I mean, we, we didn't follow our processes there. Which is the reason why that contractor was dismissed. It was actually one of our most consistent contractors, but it was something that it's there's two utilities that I think everyone utilities, which is gas and electric, will happen to be with Excel Energy, obviously, and Grand Valley Power. And you know, in our process, you'll see that's in ours, in those packets, you know, if, even if there is a utility line that is painted on the ground. It's obviously their power or on gas or an eighteen inch swath that we have on it. If they can't find that gas or power line, it's actually up to basically up to that contractor to still go ahead and go contact both utility locator. That's either got to be marked in the ticket or go in and call Exon Energy saying, can we actually verify where that is located? There are two obviously most dangerous, not just to themselves and the, the crew is actually working there, but the community itself. So we do take it, you know, pretty seriously. I know that it's pretty large number, obviously looking at it with nineteen utility hits and even six, in my opinion, is still way too many for us to be even involved for. I do feel pretty proud of our guys to try to, you know, continuously teach and try to make sure you're kind of being a force of standards, but it is that we definitely feel the same way as I think it's all, as it is definitely too many for not just the gas lines, but everything else that we're trying to.
And again, yours then is, because you've got multiple locate companies based on, I mean, the same locate company isn't doing all, all the locate. So.
It's like water and sewer. I mean, the city has their own water and sewer plants. So you have, water have their own spectrum and centrally will have USIC locate theirs, which is, you know, I think pretty well documented on some things that we had to deal with over time in, in the area. But but yes, we are dealing with, you know, multiple locate companies and there are multiple contractors or municipalities to another to make sure, you know, we try. Why, you know, it's something that, you know, us and, and Kimberly and her staff have agreed to, and it's actually part of our own standards anyways. That's why we didn't really mind it either is because it's what we require for ourselves. We do white line where our path is going to be before we call and locates. And it's for multiple reasons. Number one, you can let the, you can let the homeowner know where, where we're trying to go, if you see within utility easements, and you can have that conversation hopefully before the construction happens. But number two, also to save time on their end, and they're not, you're not just calling and locates on both sides of the road if you're on spend more and more time on their end versus you only have to be on one side of the road or whatever, and whatever the case may be. So you know, we, I think we have a decent process. We did, we have been working with Exon Energy, at least as a, you know, deep digital and more construction to implement even some of the things that we've, that they, that they have, they have their policy, which causes, which is called safe eight. That we had all our contractors basically do a safety shutdown for over a week to go over with Exon Energy about what the process looks like and what we have to do on a day-to-day basis to make sure that our construction goes through in a, in a safe and orderly manner. I think as, you know, most people understand, I mean, contractors are always there to make money. So they get paid by production, but the production means nothing if, you know, if we're not doing it in a safe manner. So we have had, you know, multiple of those, of those safety meetings, and we've also had to dismiss a couple of contractors who have tried to cut those parts.
That is one of the things. I mean, so when you call and locates, you know, we'll go out and spray paint where we're going to dig. And we call and locate, they have readings basically to come, every utility will come and use their own contractor to locate. So like Excel is using a, a different contractor than central. So we get very familiar with each locator that's out there and, you know, we try to work, find their point people and work with them. And and our guys are actually very good at, you know, determining if there's a utility in the ground. Lots of times you'll go out and you'll look at the paint and you're just like, I know there's something more. So, I mean, there are many times where we'll call back and say, are you sure you guys located this? Or you know, lots of times where something will happen is they'll come locate one wire and forget to locate the second wire. That happens all the time with communication. So, so we'll come and see a, a wire that's been painted utility, or I mean, communications is orange. You'll see an orange line there. You think it's done. And you start digging, you know, a foot or three foot or, you know, whatever the distance is away from that utility, and you hit another one that they forgot to locate. So, and it stops us. Like, we have to stop when we hit a utility. So we obviously are not wanting to hit utilities, and we spend a lot of time trying to make sure we don't. But the fact is, if it just doesn't get located and we don't, you know, it looks like everything's that's the, the majority of the time when we hit something is when we think it has been located, we find that certain utility by potholing and we, you know, go off a foot from the utility. You know, we, like you said, are almost done with everything north of the highway. Mentioned ninety, you said ninety-nine percent. We're somewhere close to very, close to done. So I am excited to be at least complete with underground construction on the north side of the highway. And we are, we just redesigning the south side of the highway, just the way it was designed and the construction cost down there just not working quite. So we're coming up with a new plan. We're getting close to having that. Our plan is to do the entire town of Fruta. We should start having circuits. So I don't know if everybody knows, but DP Digital was also the contractor that the town chose to build a new C and L and middle mile connection out to the highway. So there's a, there's a fiber connection that goes from Salt Lake to Denver. We were hired to both pass aid and through to get the building built that the, the town owns. The community will own that. Any, any contractor or ISP can use that building. So that building's in place. It's down at Public Works. Um, the, the fiber has been built all the way out to the highway. That fiber's in we're very close to, you know, connecting that. But the building as generator backup, everything. So it's done as well. It's, we're excited to be able to start hooking people up. We're planning on using that building. Will be the first tenant. Other ISPs looking at moving in. There's, so anyway, that's exciting to have that and be able to start connecting.
Anybody have any other questions?
Here on your, on your handout, you talked about calling and locating, then you have private utilities. What's the difference? So are you calling in, you, you guys call in all the, for all the locates that generally are there? When you say private locates, is that just ones that if they dug their own trench for an electrical, that's not part of Excel, then that's, you're calling that private, right?
Right. The utility is required to, to locate up to their meter lots, whatever the meter is, we don't have a meter, but we would locate wherever our termination point is.
From the street to the meter?
So in some cases, there's meters closer to the road, or there's private utilities that the homeowner owns. Is there requirement to locate them? However, very rarely do they even know how to do that. So we almost always try to help with that. And we have hired people or private locators to go out and try to find private utilities, which, you know, we do a pretty good job of missing those, but they're, they're even harder because you don't know that they're even theirs.
Thank you.
And to help with that, I mean, we, we have an entire crew that will go out. The, the main thing that we probably will hit over time is sprinkler systems. So we almost always will repair those on site, but you know, come springtime, there's a leak or something. So we have a whole team dedicated just to do that. So we've told, or keeping track of any, any yards that we've dug in. Or if we feel like there's a concern of some sort, so we'll be contacting those homeowners as we go along as spring comes. But they're also given our number so that they can call. We'll come fix pretty much anything if they can say it's close to where we're digging. Mow their grass. I don't care. I mean, we're doing whatever we can to, to try to keep everybody happy. So and the guys that are doing that are experts. I mean, they, they can come fix just about anything.
Just out of curiosity, how are you letting the homeowners know? And the reason why I'm asking, it's not a complaint. I came home one day and there's a guy standing halfway beneath my yard, and I'm looking at the sprinkler pipes. Guys filled it in. I mean, there's no complaints, but like, we never received any notice, like, come springtime. If there's a small fountain in your front yard, here's the number to call.
Yeah, we've tried to, to communicate that to the community is a number of different ways, and we still are here. Some people have not heard. So love for your help. If you know your neighbors, please call us for one. We've, we've had social media campaigns, different ways, just like the one we had, you know, just the in-house one that was over at the library the other day, just to educate. Every door that we're digging, we put a door hanger on their door. We've also sent mellers out. So and then we're telling neighbors to tell their neighbors. We've tried to get that out. Obviously, people that, you know, we have signs and, and billboards and A-frames out. So trying to get our phone number out. So if someone, you know, just sees our truck or something, we have, you know, people calling in and obviously wants to call in. We're keeping track of anybody that's called in as well and communicating back.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, Kimberly Bullen, Public Works Director, we actually have a meeting scheduled for next week internally with Public Works to talk about turning on the irrigation system and doing it systematically so that we don't have geysers just showing up all over town. And we will then schedule a meeting with deeply digital to talk about that systematic approach of turning on the irrigation system so that they can stay ahead of some of those repairs. We know we're going to see some, some leaks. I think it's just the inevitable because we didn't have water on when they were going through those neighborhoods.
Are you also, when you're putting in your fiber, are you doing as built? Okay. Do we, is the city, do, just curious, does the city get copies of those or those stay in your records? Where do those live?
So we have our own records for ourselves.
We, we actually locate our own utility because we don't trust any other dirt. But it's pretty important and I would love for you guys to have that as well and you can share that with even our competitors so that they know what our infrastructure is.
And are those paper or can those be shared digitally?
Well, we have some of your infrastructure. We're marking all of it.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Just, I mean, just some quick flyers. This is kind of what we're offering in the town. And we're happy to help. We have more education. Cassie is back here, but she lives in the community and part of her job is to just really get out and like.
And I, I'm sure you guys have been updating, you know, our staff on, on a lot of this outreach, correct?
Each week, our marketing staff actually gets with Ciara and, and the public works staff to let them know where we're trying to go each week. On underground construction side, now that for the most part, we have now turned into, you know, more of the underground fiber installation and try to trap neighborhoods with our splicing crews. That's where our locations could be shared with that as well. All of our trucks should have clearnecks wraps and, or if there still are some contractors, so should have our clearnecks magnets. But if there are any questions on that end, we should have all that updated weekly that be sent out. Yeah. And via social, that should be updated via social media on your end, on, on your guys' page as well as we have our own pages that update that.
Any, you able to provide us any insight as to when we'll start to get lit up?
So, I mean, the, the current plan right now is to turn up our, first we call it zones, but you know, first, one of our biggest zones we'll have, which is kind of in the the H ways are like Red Rocks, Windsor Park, East Carolina, Grace Park in those areas, in that area. That, that's the first, you know, the first zones we left, and we're trying to light, light that up actually here in the next couple of weeks. Our goal is to start, is to start hooking up people in the beginning of April.
Yes, we should. Yes.
I mean, I think in the net, maybe you do already have over a thousand people signed up throughout the entirety of the northern, north of I-70. So we are pretty excited. I mean, obviously, one of the things we're looking forward to is you guys to serve, to, to use our service as a community and you know, I kind of hope you guys can kind of see what the local difference looks like. And, you know, obviously being able to call, call in and, you know, call one of the people actually do care about the community that live here and everything else. So.
All right. Well, thank you for being here and updating us. All right. With that, we're going to move into our public participation. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments from the public on items that do not appear on the agenda. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? All right. Hearing none, we're going to close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements that have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. They'll all be voted on with one motion. So we're going to open that up to public comment. If there's anybody that'd like to speak on an item that's on consent agenda, now would be your opportunity. All right. Hearing none, we're going to close the consent agenda and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the consent?
On item B, is it my understanding that the nepotism piece was asked to be added by the livability commission and it wasn't already in their bylaws?
Uh, so back when the city council adopted the boards and commission policies, they added the language regarding nepotism. So we actually updated that as part of our livability commission bylaws, but those bylaws are not updated until the council formally approve them. So those have been updated and adopted by the livability commission, but now this final action is to do that through the city council. So we're kind of two birds with one stone, I suppose. So when we were going to make a change to the resolution, that's when we'd bring those additional bylaws to the council. So yeah, thank you. Of course, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right. We got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Purser, Counselor Williams?
Yes, on all items, but no on B.
Counselor Cry?
Aye.
Counselor Hancy?
Yes.
Counselor Brevent?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. With that, we'll move into, we've got three public hearings tonight, two quasi judicial hearings. And so our first quasi judicial hearing is a special event liquor permit application. And we've, we've got our deputy city clerk Deb Woods here to present.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, city council members. Deb Woods, deputy city clerk for the city of Fruta. And I'm presenting a special event liquor permit application submitted by Gemini Adventures for the Desert Rats Trail Running Festival, which is to be held on Saturday, April thirteenth from five to nine PM here at Civic Center Memorial Park at three twenty-five East Aspen Avenue. On February twenty-first. On, uh, February twenty-first, uh, Gemini Adventure submitted the application form, all the required documents and fees. To apply for the special event liquor permit, uh, for the trail running festival to be held. On Saturday, April thirteenth. And this event is an awards party for the runners of the trail running festival that will include live music. All attendees who participated in the event will be provided with one free can of beer. No other alcohol will be sold. Uh, the licensed premises will be encompassed with orange snow fencing that will be, uh, labeled. And, uh, monitored at the exits. A professional security company has been hired for the duration of the event. And there will be signage posted at all exits and entrances, reminding participants. That no alcohol is to enter or leave the licensed premises. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed Gemini Adventure's application. And issued his statement that there is nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved. Subject to the following conditions. One applicant will discontinue serving beer at eight thirty P M. To allow patrons thirty minutes to finish their beer and leave the area. Two, all alcohol will be secured and removed by nine P M. And three, the licensee is solely responsible for control of the licensed premises in regards to alcohol possession. Consumption and adherence to state and municipal liquor laws. And that does conclude my presentation. And, uh, we should have Kyla Claudell. Who is the operations coordinator with Gemini Ventures, uh, here with us virtually. Kyla, are you there?
I'm here.
Uh, so at this, at this point, I will turn it over to you in case there's anything that you'd like to add.
Um, I think that actually covered it great. This is a not-for-profit event that will be attended by our, uh, participants and their families and friends for the awards. It's going to have food, music. A minimal amount of beer, one beer for each participant in the event. And it's to celebrate the beginning of the trail season in Fruta. We're really excited.
All right. Thanks, Kyla. So with that, we're going to open it up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to make comment on this item, now would be your opportunity. All right. Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions, uh, for Kyla or for Deb related to this one?
None.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the application for a special events permit for Gemini Adventures to provide beer for the attendees of the Desert Rats Trail Running Festival. At Civic Center Memorial Park on Saturday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, from five to nine P M. Subject to the conditions stated by staff.
Second.
All right. We have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Aye.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Breavent?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Thanks, Kyla, for being here.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our second quasi judicial hearing. It's a modification of a licensed premises, uh, liquor, uh, license. And we've got our Deb Woods, our deputy city clerk here to present.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. Uh. So on February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, El Mas Cal submitted all the required documents and fees to apply for a modification. Of their hotel and restaurant, uh, liquor license. That would extend the licensed premises to a patio located at the rear of the restaurant. A diagram was included with the application and it is included in your council packet that shows where the patio is proposed to be located. Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the application and issued his memorandum that there is nothing that would prohibit the changes. In the licensing as requested. And Fire Marshal with the Lower Valley Fire District, Travis Holder, also reviewed the application. And issued his comments that the fire department would require an egress in the patio area. That is equipped with panic hardware so that patrons would not be locked. In the patio area with no exit except to go through the restaurant. Uh, co-owner of El Mas Cal, Pablo Munoz Bayas, has, uh, spoken personally with Fire Marshal Holder. And has agreed to install a gate with panic hardware as required by the L F. L V F D prior to opening the patio. He is present here tonight as the applicant's representative to answer any questions that the council may have. It is staff's recommendation that the council approve the request for the modification of licensed premises. Or Mescolera LLC DBA, S, El Mas Cal Family Mexican Restaurant and Bar, subject to the following conditions. One, the patio shall be enclosed with a fence. Uh, except for one egress exit that is equipped with panic hardware. Two, the patio area shall be monitored to ensure that alcohol is controlled within the area. And there are no violations of the liquor code. And three, the outside patio shall be kept clean and clear of all glass and other dangerous or unsightly items at all times. And at this, uh, point, that, uh, concludes my presentation. It is completely acceptable for the city council to. Move to approve the application for the modification of licensed premises, subject to the conditions stated by staff. And so Pablo, uh, is here and do you have anything to add, Pablo?
All right. Thanks, Deb. All right. With that, we're going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Now is your opportunity. All right. Hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to this item? All right. Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Uh, go ahead, Ken. I move to approve the request for modification of premises application for Mescolera LLC. Doing businesses, El Mas Cal Family Mexican Restaurant and Bar, subject to the following conditions. Patio shall be enclosed with a fence, except for one egress exit that is equipped with panic hardware. Two, the patio area shall be monitoring. Monitor to ensure that alcohol is controlled within the area and there are no violations of the liquor code. And three, the outside patio should be kept clean and clear of glass and other dangerous or unsightly items at all times.
Second.
All right. We've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Cry?
Aye.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Breavent?
Aye.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
And Counselor Williams? Motion passes five zero.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here, Pablo.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our legislative hearing. We've got ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten. It's a second reading and it's an ordinance amending the Fruta Municipal Code and creating a new title nine. Chapter to regulate unmanned aircraft systems. We've got Nick Peck, our lieutenant, uh, with the City of Fruta Police Department here to present on this one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to present on the second reading. Amending the Fruta Municipal Code, creating a new title nine chapter to regulate unmanned aircraft systems. A little bit of a brief history on this. It was first brought, uh, before council when there was a concern from a resident who hadn't experienced with. An unmanned aircraft system that we commonly refer to as drones. And they were a little bit frustrated with our ability to be able to, uh, enforce or take action on the issue. And then we began the process of looking at seeing if we could create an ordinance that would give us local control over this issue. We came up with several recommendations, um, trying to find a balance between what would give, uh, operators. The ability to enjoy Fruta and be able to use the unmanned aircraft systems that they have. But also give us an opportunity to make sure that it's done safely and that privacy interests were respected. Um, with that, uh, several things were removed from the proposed ordinance, uh, such as having to. Consent from the city manager, their designated, opening up all of the, uh. Public space in Fruta, not creating drone parks, but mainly just focusing on making sure that people's actions are safe. Um, that's not used to harass or, uh, annoy anybody, wildlife, animals, that sort of thing. And also creating, um. Uh, protection for people's private property without having the permission of the owner. In preparing this, um, we went to, uh, a training by the FAA. We also met with several drone enthusiasts in the City of Fruta to hear their concerns and if they may have. Also reached out to cities that have enacted ordinances. Um, I spoke with the commander from Windsor. And, um, basically his feedback was that they have not had an issue with the ordinance they passed. They had one small issue, but they had a local airport. And so that was turned over to the FAA for their enforcement. He also came from Fort Collins where he was involved in that ordinance and again, did not have any issues with it. Um, so through, uh. Looking at the ordinance and trying to create something that we thought. That's where we came up with this and so it'd be staff's recommendation that the ordinance is passed as is. Is there any questions that I could answer?
You can after I open up for public comment. How's that? Is your presentation done then?
That's it.
All right. With that, we're going to open this up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, uh, now is your opportunity. All right. Hearing none, we're going to close public comment and now Nick wants to know if we have any questions. So anybody, who, anybody have questions?
I, I do.
All right.
I think it's a similar question that Counselor Cry has asked several times that has taken me all this time to. Understand exactly what he was asking and now I have the same question, which is, um. On the, under the exemptions, the nine point one, seven point oh four zero B. When it talks about that it's not intended. For, you know, to keep businesses from using these crafts. In this circumstance of which this, uh, came to our attention in the first place, could that be? Said that it's being used for, as business purposes?
Yes, that, that's correct. Um, it would, if, if somebody is using the drone for, uh, like, let's say for real estate, for taking pictures. Even it can go past a recreation purpose, even if you're doing it for nonprofit and anything that's outside of just hobby. Um, then that is correct and those would fall under, uh, typically under the FAA's one oh seven. Uh, requirement that they would have to have. Um, what this was designed is to kind of, um. Make sure that we're not stepping on people's toes and trying to use it for, um, for necessary business purposes.
Okay.
I, I, I think that my concern was that maybe an HOA.
That's what I mean.
A zealous HOA member would go and get a permit so they could then do this without, but I think that. In this case, it still gives. The, uh, police department the ability to say, you know. To get permission, did you, you know what I mean?
It'd be more of a business use. I mean, it's some, just because somebody has a business license. Doesn't give them that right, like even a real estate agent, they're hiring somebody to bring a drone in and do footage. So it's a. It's a contractual basis of like being hired. And I think that's kind of what you're saying about this. Business use was, it's not just, I'm going to go get a business license so I can. Buy my neighbors. It's. I'd be, you know, hired to do that drone.
And I think people who have a business would avoid those types of situations where they would be hired to go and look in somebody's backyard.
And somebody still has privacy rights and property that they can infringe on them, even though they're in an HOA. They still have rights that, that would and should inhibit, uh, an oversell us business use.
I just wanted to make sure that that didn't. Immediately exempt, um, all these things that we were trying to do.
Yes, correct. And, and yeah, there would still, um, as Councilman Hancey said, it would still provide, um, we still have trespassing issues that.
Perfect. Okay. Great. All right.
Section thirty would still take precedent. Sorry, section thirty, paragraph E would still take precedent over everything else.
Correct.
Beautiful.
I appreciate, I appreciate all the work that you've done.
Yeah. Yes.
Uh, I had some concerns with the first draft and I'm glad we could go through the process to get this down to what I, I think is. You know, we're down to the, the minimum, which is what we want. We don't want to, um, infringe on any rights and, and not have over. Overregulation where we don't need it, right? Like, there's no reason for us to have enacted a law that's already established in state or the feds, right? Uh, but no, I appreciate all the hard work to get it to where we are, um, because I think this would be, uh, just right what we needed in our community. So thank you very much.
The only one I have is a housekeeping issue with the last, whereas there's two does at the end of that for this. Oh. That's my only, that's my only housekeeping issue.
Hey, Nick, did the person that had the original complaint, have you had any contact with them at all? Let them know what we're up to at all or?
No, we have not. We'll reach out to them once the, uh, the ordinance, uh, depending on how it goes. Um, when we have something, we'll reach out to them and let them know, but we have not had any further complaints with that. It should be noted that I'm aware of at least two other complaints.
Oh, really?
So it says something that we see is going to become more of an increasing issue.
Did that already, when you guys had those ones come in, did you say it was something we're working on? So it already is doing the, the goal of giving you guys some teeth.
Absolutely. And even just knowing that we are working on something, um, gives it that educational component where we could get some compliance with people.
And I, I definitely want to echo that. Thank you for your work on that. We all appreciate how hard you worked on this. Thank you.
Are you able to give, um, you said there's two, been two other instances. Can you give some detail on that, those, just?
Uh, yes, they both involved private property and, uh, drone operations, uh, around near private property. Um, especially, uh, one was at night and so there are concerns involved with that, with, it was, uh, some sort of invasion of privacy. But both of them involved private residents, which is where I see the majority of the complaints will be coming from.
And these, this would have, you, had this been enacted, you could have dealt with it head on with this?
It really, if had this been enacted, um, it would have probably happened the same way. Um, and both the cases were able to, to educate and the people were very accommodating and understood. Uh, in hindsight, their actions and how that could be concerning to other people. And so really, um. Knowing that we're just working on it, that was more than enough that they wanted to comply.
Nice.
All right. Do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four ten. Amending the Fruta Municipal Code and creating a new chapter entitled nine to regulate unmanned aircraft systems.
All right. We've got a second. Any other questions before Nick runs off?
Do we get to get an anti-drone?
Yeah.
That's an extra's budget.
Okay, that sounds good.
Budget season is coming. So, all right. Hearing none constructive, uh, comments. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Breavent?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thanks, Nick. All right. We don't not have anything on our administrative agenda, so we're going to move into our city manager's report.
Uh, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I just have a few, uh, quick updates for you tonight. Um, we have a pretty full workshop scheduled for next week, so we just wanted to give you a quick overview of what will we discussing. Um, four main items and then, uh, several proclamation requests, uh, for the council review. But we're going to start off with the update on the short-term rental software and also the Granicus. Um, compliance software that we're using that was originally scheduled, uh, for this meeting, but staff asked to have another week. Um, to, you know, prepare everything, but also, um, get information ready that I think will be of interest. Uh, to the council and definitely help, um, you know, with decision-making in the future. So we did bump that, uh, to the March workshop, so I think that'll be, uh, good. And then we'll move on and discuss the localism committee duties, responsibilities. Timeline, if the council, uh, is interested in continuing forward with creating the formal committee, mechanic structure, et cetera. We also have a discussion on the pre-owned second-hand sales tax exemption that. Grand Junction City Councilor, uh, Cody Kennedy presented on earlier this month, uh, to the council. We've been able to get, um, a little bit more information on that. Um, come up with a general fiscal impact, what that would entail if we were to move forward with such an exemption. So we'll be sharing that with you. And then finally, we'll end on a discussion on what to do with the proceeds of the sale of Enic Lake. And how we can reappropriate that for, um, uh, public use in Fruta. Um, so that's pretty, pretty full workshop. Um, but I think we should be able to cover most of that. Um, stuff and then I, and then, yeah, we'll end on just, uh, considering several, uh, proclamation requests. Um, you may have noticed, all of you, that ballots were received, uh, this week as well. Um, two weeks from tonight, is that right? The election, um, is that night? So we are receiving ballots until seven P M. On that night, for residents do have two places where they can drop off the ballots. We do have a ballot box, um, that's available downstairs in the lobby. You probably saw it if you've been in, um, during normal business hours. That ballot box will also be available for residents to drop off their ballot until seven o'clock on election night as well, April second. And then they can always, uh, use the, um, drive up or walk up, uh, drop-off box in the parking lot. And they can, of course, mail their ballots back to us as well. We've received a handful so far, but they're arrived in homes this week. Um, so yeah, we should be, uh, that should be good. And yeah, um, April second election night, we'll receive those until, um, seven P M. And if people are interested, they didn't receive a ballot, I believe we can still register them up until the end of the election, they can get their ballot. Is that correct, Deb?
That is correct.
Yeah, perfect. So. Yeah, perfect. So if anyone's still interested in getting one, we can provide them one here at the Civic Center as well. My last item, and Mike sent this over too, is that the the state legislator is a little over halfway through their session. They're working on a number of bills that should be of interest to the council, but one that's, or several that are pretty reminiscent of last year is multiple statewide preemptions on land use provisions and land use code changes throughout the state. So just like last year, CML has been asking local city councilor members, organizations to take a stance in some of these proposed land use bills regarding housing, but again, just preemptions on on local control. Basically asking if we will sign petitions or maybe we'll even pass resolutions opposing some of these bills because they really dig away from local control and our ability to, as a governing body, to legislate our own local land use policies or replaces them with statewide policies. So the email that you received, there was a few links in those. It's like, if you'd like to sign as a city councilor member, you can individually in your individual capacity, but last year, if you remember, we also did do one resolution opposing the statewide bill and this year we could do more for the other ones as well. Basically, again, the state is forcing upon local land use decisions on a statewide level and they are implementing pretty significant consequences if you don't comply with some of the goals that are outlined in some of these bills. One of them, we're still trying to figure out if it's applicable to us is that if you don't meet housing goals, they can withhold your highway user tax fund dollars, which is several hundred thousand dollars a year that can go to the general fund. There also bill prohibits any sort of parking requirements in downtown zones, but also other zones. Another bill allows the use of accessory dwelling units throughout, you know, several residential areas, which we already allow. When we went through our local land use or we went through our our land use update, these are a number of things that we did. You've seen, we have ADUs or the accessory dwelling units going up kind of in force throughout the downtown. People can build them, but this kind of just takes away our ability to make those decisions locally and replaces them with what the state would like to see. So again, we just wanted to put it out there if there's any interest. I think as a city council, we've talked about it, we've talked at length, we fully support attainable housing, we fully support workforce housing. But the crux of the issue comes down is that the state is legislating local land use decisions as always been in our authority as a local organization. So if you're interested and we can bring resolutions back to you or you can just sign the petitions in your own capacity or in your official capacity as well. So we just wanted to bring that to you. Now, just so everyone knows, we are a part of several organizations. We, the city of Fruta does not lobby, we don't have lobbyists, but we are a part of organizations who do. The Carroll Municipal League is all but two municipalities throughout Colorado. They oppose these bills. The associated governments in Northwest Colorado oppose these bills, but we cannot take any formal action unless the council does. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. If you do want to take any action, you definitely don't have to, but CML is requesting it if interested. So I will pause there, of course.
So we have the, our, this council's policy that we don't act without consulting everybody first.
Yeah.
Are we all on board with opposing these?
Yep.
Yes.
If anybody wants to individually?
Okay. So, yeah, I guess if you're seeing thumbs up that, yes, if you want to bring some of those that we need a signed letter, then.
Yeah, we did a resolution last year and we sent that over to Representative Soper, Senator Rich, and, you know, they use that, but, you know, as committee work continues and they start, a lot of this stuff starts seeing the floor. I mean, it could come to where, you know, they're falling back on some of the stuff and hopefully they're including our feedback as local governments, some of their decision-making, but we're not entirely sure if that's the case, but again, I'll stop that.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, council reports and actions wants to start. Ken, did you want to start?
Nothing for me. I do have, well, I have a question. I know that on election night, historically, the results would be reported later in the evening, put on a sandwich board out there. Is that gonna be the case this time for?
Yes, yeah, we'll have a big board set up in the lobby downstairs. And we'll put the the unofficial results up and then the official results should come later, but there's usually not much of a difference between the two.
Is that around nine or 10 PM? When?
Yeah, about, about nine, between nine and 10, usually.
Usually about the end of the council meeting.
Yeah.
Thereafter.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. All right, Aaron?
Just FYI, the park board meeting is moved out one week to the eighth due to wanting to onboard the new members and have a lot of people present because they're gonna be voting on for leadership. That's it.
All right, Matthew?
Uh, Fruta Chamber meets tomorrow. Western Colorado Economic Summit is April sixteenth. Do we have a table?
Or? We don't. We've been registering people separately, so we do have two registered. I believe we have Counselor Miller and Counselor Cry. If this group is interested, we could, we could continue registering everyone separately or we could move, move ahead with the table, whatever you prefer. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So that's coming up. I'm a panelist on one of the topics. I don't know what yet. Two other quick notes.
And like like strikes, like utility strikes and stuff?
No, this one, utility strikes, nor smart alec comments. During certain things.
I guess I should show up to, you should sign me up for that, so I'm on my last day on the job, I can give you time.
Thanks. Last year was my father did that, so I appreciate the replacement. I was at the pool where they've started construction. It's the little things that matter. In the pool area where they're starting construction, they put up plywood, they painted it. And somebody actually made a comment to me, they're like, nice, it's nice that they care about the aesthetics as they're doing work. So, and then as I was coming in, there was a gentleman with a Rivian charging outside and he's like, this is great that you guys have it here. I sat and got a pizza, ate it on my tailgate. And last time I was here, because the charger was here, we ended up spending the night here. So it is having the desired impact, so, which was kind of nice to just bump into somebody about that, so. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Janine?
Um, I have a question about the Chamber event gala banquet, what's it called? Party?
Yeah, the annual banquet.
Are we, do we have a table for that? Are we also supposed to email Jennifer if we want to go to that or is that our own?
We have, we have a table because we're the, we're
Yeah.
Sponsor.
We, we do, I think we just have the one. I can, let me find out and I'll get back to you, but yeah. Yeah, yeah. And I was gonna ask, I believe that's April thirteenth, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Joel will be there. I'll be there.
So you'll get back to us?
Yeah.
Just email Jennifer if we want to.
Yeah, either way is fine. If everyone's planning on going, I can just put you all down, but yeah, or you can email Jennifer, whatever you think. Okay, it sounds like.
Ken, no peer pressure. Oh, you can let him know.
Put everyone down, but Counselor Cry, yeah.
I mean, he's going to G-Job, so he doesn't know if he can go to both.
Well, they're on two different days.
No, something else. And then the Cocovino was on Friday and it was fantastic. The Arts and Culture Board did a really great job and.
Congratulations on the auction. It went well?
Yeah, it's a live auction was super successful. I actually kind of asked, like in comparison to how it used to be at the at the rec center compared to this in regards to money that's brought in and expense, and they wound up actually making more money. Even though it's a small, like you can, you can't have as many people, but still I owned that making more money and it's just like at the time when that was being held at the rec center, Nancy was discussing how like artists didn't really have a place to show what they could do. And so it was very important in that timeframe for it to happen there. But now this is very much more like this fancy fundraiser event and yeah, it was a good time. I do have a question about farmer's market and because I have several people coming up to me. Again, I've brought this up one other time, or maybe two other times, about its location and I have lots of people pleading that it come back to downtown. I know it's, I know it's not ours, it's not our event. The reason why I'm even bringing it up here is because every time I have asked the Chamber, it has been said that the city said that they wanted it moved because they didn't want activity happening on the grass here, which obviously is not the case any longer because we do all sorts of things all the time.
We do, yeah.
On the grass, so that.
That wasn't the rea, the reason was the amount of use of the grass.
Nevertheless, nevertheless.
Yeah, so I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was a matter of the maintenance of the grass, you're running a Thursday night concert and having to water, then you're doing a Saturday event. And so I think it wasn't a matter of not having events on the grass, it's the amount, the quantity of events that would happen.
I also thought it was a challenge this year because there's two, two times that they can't do the farmer's market because they're here. Because there's already something scheduled, is my understanding. And so now there's concern over consistency of where it would be.
They were gonna move it back here?
I know Kayla approached the city about moving it back here and at that, I don't know when that conversation happened, but at the time of the conversation, there were already two events scheduled for Saturday here and there was confusion on moving it to different locations.
There's public interest considerable in my, based on interactions that people have had with me that would be very interested in that happening. So if the Chamber's interested in that, we all are interested in having a more conversation or talk about if we would be, or whoever, I don't even know if that is a council decision or just where staff could just move forward with that. I'm just, I'm just passing along messages that have been coming to me about this. I happened also, I had an idea myself, but I would not have brought it up just on my own. This has been lots of people coming to me about this issue.
So I have a chamber meeting tomorrow morning at seven AM and I can certainly bring it up and ask that they get the, you know, clearly it's up to, you know, the leadership there, but in terms of, would you, you know, let me just get a feel for where they're at.
Yeah.
And then possibly talking to the city about it.
Great.
Okay. Write that down, otherwise I'll forget it.
And I will say, we do have a small team that meets with them often to and I, I've even talked to Kayla about the potential of moving it back and she's talked about it as well in our tourism board meeting. So I think they were still trying to figure out if that's what they wanted. They did talk about Reed Park as being a great option because they, as vendors have increased and as that event has grown, they've really been able to grow and provide a lot more space than what was currently available at the Civic Center. They've also added like the family fun days and they have, you know, space for like the, the blow up amenities and whatnot too, but I don't, I don't think like as a city, if they were interested, I don't know if we would necessarily decline them from using Civic Center Park if that's really what they wanted to do. But I think last, that we've talked to them, they were still interested in keeping it Reed Park. But again, we have events coming all the time, like you were saying, there's multiple. They're on weekends, we have several events. I don't think there's ever been a time that we've declined based upon other considerations like that. It may be a factor that we as staff provide to them, but.
It's definitely.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll be interested, but we can also follow up as well. Sierra, did you have anything to add to that? Yeah?
I'll just say that, yeah, Counselor Bremen, you'll probably can get more information from the Chamber too, but a while ago, we were working with Kayla on the pros and cons for each location, Reed Park, the Civic Center, and then even areas around like the Mulberry Plaza and just the capacity for each one. And if I'm remembering correctly, the Civic Center, there was like two or four Saturdays that we'd have to move the farmer's market for it because of events and then also they would have to use the parking lot and the grass itself, which isn't an issue, but just some of the kind of details of it. So yeah, there's definitely been conversations around where the best location would be, so.
Thank you, Sierra.
No. We don't want to compete with downtown.
Yeah.
Right now. And then, just when you just mentioned Mulberry Plaza, again, you all probably saw the in, in the Friday update, but Mulberry Plaza has been nominated for an award.
Yeah, yeah. We are a finalist for an award. You want to touch upon that too?
Yeah, so it's an award, I think it's called the like Colorado Downtown Award and it's part of a conference that's happening in Durango and Design Workshop, the consultant that we worked with applied, but just applied for the award on behalf of the city for the design of it. And so, yeah, we're one of the finalists and Mark Mancuso and I are planning to go down to Durango and attend the dinner and in case we do win to have representation. So we'll see what happens and that is happening on April fourth, Thursday night, yep, at like five to seven is the dinner, so. Yes, so hopefully we'll have some good news.
Yeah, Downtown Excellence Award, yeah, by Downtown Colorado Inc., so very cool.
James? Um, the only thing that I wanted to bring up is, can we make sure that the dog park's water is on the schedule of getting turned back on? Now that we turned it off a little early and it's the first year we've had to turn it back on, but if we could get it turned back on soon. And other than that, that's it.
Um, I just have one and I was gonna ask Shannon this one again, because Shannon has already talked with them, but we got, everybody got the email from Lori about the trash cans. She contacted me over the weekend and so I got ahold of Shannon, who's our acting city manager, so he likes these fun projects. He did talk to Lori and she had a lot of positive things to say about the like recycling and all that, but I don't, how many anecdotally, or maybe you know, how many complaints are we getting on the trash cans and not being able to use these? Because I just want to make sure I reply back to her.
Right, right.
In the right way, because some of the, you know, the wording is, we did not come out on the better end of the deal, but I think long term with all the discussions, we did. So I didn't know if you're, you're hearing a lot, lot of complaints related to speci, their specific trash cans or with the limit of the amount of trash. I don't know how that sits. Ours, I'm trying to think of a best way to reply.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I had a great conversation with Lori. And I definitely, I definitely understand, there has been a lot of frustration over this transition moving everyone from, who was still on the unlimited trash collection to the automated trash collection services. So we, we've heard a lot. I don't know the number of calls, I'm sure administration staff has it, but I've taken several calls of my own. It's, it's definitely been a frustration and we can definitely understand that residents are frustrated and rightfully so, right? So kind of just taking a step back and this is usually what I, what I tell everyone, because if it gets escalated, that's when they, they send it to me. You know, taking a step back, when we first approved this waste management contract, we went out to bid in twenty nineteen, we had two companies bid on it. Waste Management was one of them and then Monumental Waste was the other one. There's pretty significant cost difference between the two. I believe Monumental Waste was ten dollars more per month than Waste Management, so the council, many of you were on it at the time, or maybe just Ken and Merrick and Cade were on it, made the decision to continue with waste management because, you know, our goal has always been, what can we do to keep our rates low for our residents? And we actually do have the lowest rates for trash collection services in the valley when you compare to Grand Junction, you compare to Palisade, even the unincorporated areas as well. But when we accepted that offer, they bid unlimited, but they also bid the automated service and they told us, you know, this was kind of the last time that they would offer this because it's kind of going away. It's not the norm anymore and a lot of cities don't have this just because there's several reasons why you should automate. And we, we went through all that, we don't need to kind of go through all of that again, but the main reasons are becoming more and more difficult to find CDL drivers. We have a very difficult time to find people with CDL to where now we're hiring maintenance workers, we practically budget the entire CDL expense and we get a two-year commitment with them to stay on Fruta as we pay for that as part of their training and education. But yeah, very difficult to find CDL drivers, let alone very difficult to find people who want to work on the back of a trash truck continually lift trash in the truck and go from there. So with our contract expiring at the end of this year, Waste Management approached us last year, talked about the change, we brought it to council and talked about what can we do to And talked about what can we do to kind of offset some of these effects of moving everyone from the unlimited trash, uh, to the automated service. We, I thought we got some great, um, kind of concessions out of the deal because if we would have waited till the contract was up and we went out to bid, we may have not, we may have not gotten anything. Um, but basically, you know, we moved everyone to the automated service. They can have a 96 gallon. They're also providing single stream recycling, which, um, recycling is up significantly. So eventually that'll probably cut down on the fees that we pay or Waste Management pays at the landfill. Because, you know, fees in landfill continue to increase, um, uh, each year, but they're bringing less things to landfill because more things are being recycled. So that's been great. Um, they're offering the leaf pickup in the fall, three weeks for that. And they also offered that holiday dumpster, which I don't know if anyone used it in January, but it was full within days. We kept it out there for a couple of weeks and, uh, it definitely got, um, used for that. But, um, and then another thing, we offer a second container for $4 if people are interested in that. Um, so as part of this, we made that transition. We re-upped them for another three years after this term. Um, and they moved everything to automated for several reasons. Um, and people do have the option to, uh, use a different, or to use a second can as long as it's a waste management container. Um, so yeah, a lot of the crux has been, can I use my old container? Um, they say they're transitioning their entire fleet to compressed natural gas trucks. Um, so they say they're not compatible with the new trucks. Um, also they've lost several containers, like picking them up in the past to where, you know, they load them, they fall in, they get crushed, et cetera. But, um, it's, it's, it's very, it's very frustrating. We definitely get it. You know, I think it's kind of a trade-off to where we went with the deal that we did because we got some great things from it, but also we kept our rates low. If we wanted to move forward and we want to make changes, we want to give everyone a second, third, fourth container. We can always do that, but the fee is going to be passed along to the resident, right? Like we pay, what is it, 1875 per month for trash? Um, Palisade, I think is 25 with recycling. I'd have to check on Grand Junction, but, um, it just costs more, the more services we provide. So it's really kind of what's important, you know, to the residents, but also what's important, um, to the council as well. So, yeah, I, I definitely understand Lori's frustrations. Um, you know, I've also had a lot of good calls though too, not as many, I'll be honest. I'd say it's probably three to one, if I'm being generous, maybe four to one, three to one.
How the phone calls are.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. But there's, there's been a lot of great feedback. The single stream recycling is very popular. I think it's great. Um, you're not hauling those two containers out to, out to the curb. It's all in one. Our, our recycling has went up 10 tons per month, which is significant because that's 10 less tons that we're bringing to the landfill. Um, trash has actually went down as well, which we'd point to where you're not letting us use as many containers we used to use, which is correct. But our ordinance actually says that people, when we were doing the unlimited, they could use three, up to three 32 gallon containers, which is equivalent to a 96 gallon container. Um, so they were limited to that, but Waste Management, you know, always did that stuff. They picked up the additional trash. Which I think has made this transition more difficult because of that. But no, I heard frustrations, several people, it's things we'll take into consideration probably the next time around. And speaking with other companies, they've all been purchased. There are a few smaller ones that I hear are operating. But I don't know if the service would be any different just because this is how kind of trash has got to. We had that unlimited for so long, which is great, is always good. But as, you know, things change and, you know, labor markets become more and more tight, you know, more and more people are leaving for different positions, et cetera. Um, you know, they just, that was kind of the option they presented. So that was a long answer for a short question. I'll stop there in case you have other questions or anything.
Points was that she had seen in the past.
Yeah.
Where it could be, were automatically lifted.
Yeah.
Um, so why can't she use, and I've just sent pictures. It's a, it's a smaller, skinnier.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Um, and you're saying their trucks are transitioning.
Yep.
Can't handle the smaller size.
Yeah, and they've lost several is what we're told too. So they try to dump it, they throw it in, yeah. Yeah, and that is, that is one of the benefits through having all waste management containers too. If one does get broken or one does get cracked, they pay for it. You're not on the hook to pay for that. But yeah, a lot of the feedback we have received has been, you know, I just bought these, you know, hundred dollar containers, all of that. What can I do with them now? And I mean, those are, and those are legitimate concerns for sure, but yeah.
Answered. Probably most of us didn't know that fact, that the ordinance previously was three cans, but at 32 gallons each.
Yeah.
The exact amount that we already have. So.
Yeah.
That fact alone is probably very helpful.
Yeah, it does. And also the ordinance and, you know, just our general municipal code does not allow trash to be just left out on its own. Without being in a container of some sort, whether it's a smaller one or the larger one. But again, it was always picked up, you know, never really any questions asked. So I think that's what makes it harder is because people have grown to like a certain level of service. But as things have changed, then, you know, it's not the same as it was. But again, we can provide whatever service we want to provide. At the end of the day, it just comes down to what people want to pay. And, you know, I think that's a serious question we could ask or could get feedback on.
It's fair, but, but I think a good, a good thing that might be able to keep it mayor is that. We still have the lowest prices in the valley in that, because I would assume our services are, the current services are similar to those other, uh, municipalities. And we still have the cheaper, yeah, she makes some good points like unlimited for a lot less money. We should have been able to go get a, a better contract if we were going to be limited. But the reality is, I think we, I think we did it, a good job for our community as a council to, um, make some modifications and extend it. To keep those lower prices with the change. So I think that might be just something to communicate there. And then, um. Our contract goes back pretty far to 2019. I would think that that's a, a, another valid comment, but. Seems like we've got a dang good deal, even though we're losing, losing some things.
Inflation.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
That we're, we still are on the better end because if we had to fully renegotiate, we're paying, we'd be paying a lot more for what we're still getting today.
And another, oh, sorry, Counselor Anthony.
You're right.
Another question we get too is like, can we just cancel ours and go with our own? Which again, you know, per municipal code, we as a city are required to offer some sort of trash collection service, um, in one way or another. Um, so we do that through contract services because it's so much cheaper to do that than if, you know, we were to add another department to Public Works. Also Kimberly would probably leave, so we don't want to do that. Yeah, as, as she's leaving right now. Um, but I mean, it's cheaper to contract it out, you know, they have all the infrastructure. Um, but we get our rates, um, because we do have the one provider. I mean, Palisade, you're paying 25 bucks. You can pick multiple providers. But again, you're just kind of seeing it on the other end of that by paying more, by having that option. So again, it's, it's things we could consider. I just looked up, so Grand Junction, 2275. I'm not sure if recycling. Oh yeah, so recycling is 28 total? Yeah. Yeah, so 28 total. And then.
I think you have enough information.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, alright, I just, yeah, so I'll reply to her, um, just so everybody knows that and, um, yeah. Alright, that's all I have. So does anybody have any second round stuff? I'm looking at Ken.
One.
Only have like a month left to do that, so.
One very quick go back. Uh, our Parks and Rec Director did say that the water will be turned on shortly at the dog park. Uh, we will turn on.
Soon, if you want to, thank you.
So they, yeah, they wait until, um. There's no more freezes that can occur. So usually right after April 1st, that water gets turned on.
Yeah. Right, thank you.
Good answer, good answer. Alright, with that, the time is now 8:39 PM and we are adjourned.